Yes. Luke?
Here.
Richard?
Here.
Mark?
Here.
And, uh... The only thing I have to add to the agenda is item B on the public hearing, I just wanted to cover BGA dash B that's two thousand twenty-three to recess because this meeting and I want to spend that time up. So do not worry for that. With added, entertain motion without change.
I submit.
Second.
Motion by Ash, second by Luke to approve the agenda with that addition, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. And everybody has a chance to look at the minutes from December. No changes in campaign motion.
I'm going to do it. We approve the minutes of December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Motion by Mark, second by Luke to approve the minutes for December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Is... Anybody here for the public forum other than the public hearing? Where we should speak other than that hearing, not that we will oppose the public forum, uh, we'll go through the public hearing. Now call the general room six A, public hearing for case Z dash twenty twenty-three dash zero two, request for rezoning uh, to our two multifamily residential districts. Please ring.
That first line is wrong, I apologize.
What do you have?
It should be R one.
R one.
Single family zero lot line.
R one A.
R one A.
Does any member of the planning commission wish to abstain from voting on this agenda?
No.
Let the record show there are no extensions, we have form of four, commissioners, president of the public here. Uh, does any member of the planning commission wish to report any expedited communications?
No.
No.
As the record show, no expedited communications have been reported. Secretary has reported that notice to this hearing was published in Art Valley News on twelve fourteen, twenty twenty-three, which is at least twenty days advanced notice as required. The property owner and surrounding property owners were also notified by letter at least twenty days prior to this hearing. Therefore, I declare that notification requirements have been satisfied for this public hearing. I will now ask Dustin Dalton to present a brief case of reports and recommendations.
All right. Case Z twenty twenty-three dash zero two, General New York and Cynthia Branch requests rezoning R one A single family zero lot line residential district. The applicant property owner is requesting zone change from C three general commercial district to R one A single family zero lot line residential district to develop patio homes on a portion of property generally located six hundred seventy feet north of Kichai Road, sixty-fourth Street North, and east of Oliver Street. The subject property is seven point eight eight six acres and is undeveloped. Zone change will apply to the east approximately six point six acres of the property and the west approximately one point two eight six acres of letting Oliver Street are to remain C three general commercial district. Within the area of the commercial district, a small art park is being proposed as a gathering spot with displays. The C three general commercial district does not allow patio homes while R one A single family residential lot line residential district permits patio homes by right. The property will need to be replatted and re-subdivided for development and will be subject to the development standards outlined for R one A single family zero lot line residential district. Regulation states that R one A single family zero lot line residential district has a maximum lot coverage of sixty percent. With current site plan, the lot coverage will be approximately fourteen percent. All zero lot line developments are also subject to the supplemental provisions outlined in section six point five G of the zoning regulations. The applicant, excuse me, the applicant is requesting that this zoning is not implemented until the site has been replatted, creating a lot or lots on the west section of the site adjacent to Oliver Street, no less than three hundred seventy-five feet north and south by a hundred and fifty feet east and west to remain C three general commercial district. The applicant shall provide planning staff with a legal description of the portion of the property approved for zone change prior to the case going to council for final action. Case history, on May twenty-six, twenty sixteen, the property was platted as paramount subdivision lot one, block one, and reserve A. The property is undeveloped. In twenty twenty-three, a request Z twenty twenty-three dash zero one to rezone the property to R two multifamily residential district was brought before the planning commission and the city council. Planning commission recommended not approving and city council denied. Adjacent zoning and land use to the north is C two and R one commercial buildings and Kichai City Park. South and east are zoned as R one with single family residences. West is R one and C one, single family residents and undeveloped. Public services, north of Oliver Street is a two-lane paved arterial road with open digits. The requested zone change is in accordance with Kichai's twenty forty comprehensive plan. The future development plan map from the plan depicts the subject property as appropriate for housing. One of the key objectives of the plan is to promote a good mix of housing options, size, price, type, own rent. This change in zoning will help support a mix of housing options as well as commercial buildings and public spaces for art in accordance with this objective. The land use and site development section of the comprehensive plan also states the arts and business district is intended to be a vibrant, walkable, and active business area that attracts residents and visitors. Achieving this goal means the district should be a mixed-use area where business owners can live and work in the same structure or on the same property. Flexibility is the key. There are many pieces to the puzzle to make this district work as well as the development of the entire planning area. Developing patio homes with abiding commercial space used as an art park and gathering area will help bring the pieces of the puzzle together and may be consistent with the plan's recommendations for land use and site design. The local resources section of the comprehensive plan states Kichai should provide ample public gathering spaces, especially within the arts and business district. The district is intended to be a vibrant activity center where residents and visitors gather, shop, and socialize. The commercial buildings, space, and art park are compatible with surrounding land use and support the overall vision of the arts and business district. The housing section of the comprehensive plan states promote mixed-use areas in designated locations for residences in a mix with commercial developments and promote a residential population to support expansion of commercial and industrial businesses. The per- the proposed plan and request is in line with these goals and objectives. More residents will need to commercial and industrial growth. The housing section of the comprehensive plan also states to support increased population, housing supply must increase. Some areas of the planning area will be more efficiently served by city infrastructure and services. Kichai should support the development of new housing options that can be effectively served by city infrastructure and services with a focus on the primary growth areas. Public utilities are already served to the property and this request conforms to the vision of Kichai's twenty forty comprehensive plan. Recommendation, based upon the information available prior to the public hearings, planning staff recommends that the request be approved, subject to the following conditions. Provide planning staff with a legal description of the portion of property approved for zone change prior to the case going to council for final action. This recommendation is based on the following findings. The properties to the north are zoned as C two local commercial district developed with commercial businesses and R one single family district developed as a city park. Properties to the east are zoned and developed as R one single family residential district. Properties to the west are zoned R one single family residential district, developed with single family homes and C one arts and business district undeveloped. Properties to the south are zoned as R one single family residential district and C one arts and business district. Conformance of the request change to be adopted or recognized comprehensive plan and policies, the request of the rezoning is in accordance with Kichai's twenty forty comprehensive plan as discussed in the staff report. Adequacy of public utilities, roadways, and other public services relative to the anticipated impacts of the proposed use. All utilities and public services are provided to the area. Staff do not anticipate a significant increase in public utilities or services. Suitability of the subject property for the use, uses to which it has been restricted. Subject property site is currently zoned C three general commercial district, which is does not permit patio homes. Until the time property has remained vacant, has zoned. The property has been zoned as C three general commercial district since January fourteen, twenty sixteen. After that, the property was rezoned for a C three general, before that, the property was rezoned from C three general commercial district to R one A single family zero lot line residential district and R two multifamily residential district, May eighth, two thousand eight. From January fourteenth to twenty sixteen, excuse me, January fourteenth, twenty sixteen to present, it has been C three general commercial district. From May eighth, two thousand eight to January fourteenth, twenty sixteen, it was zoned as R one A single family zero lot line residential district and R two multifamily residential district. Before May eighth, two thousand eight, it was zoned as C three general commercial district. Extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property. Staff does not anticipate that approval of the request got significant negative impacts on the surrounding properties. The site plan shows substantial amount of buffering provided by reserve A, which will help buffer the patio homes from abiding uses. Conformance of the request to change to be adopted or recognized comprehensive plan and policies. The request of a zone change is in accordance with Kichai's twenty forty comprehensive plan as discussed in the staff report. Impact of the proposed development on community facilities, staff do not expect negative impacts on community facilities. Public input, staff received one call from a business owner, Carlos Ramos of Valley Florida. During conversations, the case was explained to Carlos, who said it sounded, sounds like it would be beneficial to the city and doesn't see a problem with it. Staff received several emails from residents not in support of the zone change. See emails up in the report for more information. Attachments, we have an aerial map of the area that is being requested zone change. This map is showing its current C three in dark red or deep red. We've got C two to the north in pink. The tan is all R one. This area here is zoned as C one along with these pink areas down here. Kichai community, um, development plan. Plan for the area right here, south of the park. This is the site plan. We've got patio homes, commercial district, and an area here for an art park. Site photos. Subject property. Subject property looking east. Reserve is in these trees right here. North of the subject property and south of the subject property. An email was, was received from Lopeka Hatch. I am strongly opposed to any of this land being taken for housing for multiple reasons. May one mean that if, if the land is taken, there will be no chance for that property to be utilized for park space and business development that would benefit the community as a whole. I believe that Oliver sixty-first is the ideal for business and community projects because of the accessibility of Oliver and central location in the heart of town. There is a housing project proposed at sixty-nine and Oliver that will be a hundred ninety-six patio homes. There are still seventy undeveloped lots in North Woods, which forty-nine acres of the former sunrise school property that already has residential and commercial zoning allowed. Also, Snowbird Lane in Kichai is already zoned for multifamily and those lots are ready to be built on. This is not to mention that all the building, not to mention all the building that is already happening just south of Kichai and Oliver with the new community between Kichai and Bel Air. The community spent time, money, investment, and a plan to determine what the desires of the people of Kichai are. In that plan, they outlined areas as light commercial with potential for part of it to be future extension of the park. I believe that as there is more growth in Kichai, there will be more demand for parks and green spaces as well as light commercial that would benefit the community as a whole. Please take this under, uh, consideration as you discuss the rezoning proposition. Email received from Stephanie Coleman. My name is Stephanie Coleman, my husband and our two boys live at fifty-four, five thirty-two North Forty Fifth Street. I emailed you back in August about wanting not to rezone the property, the paramount subdivision just south of the Jump Start gas station. We are not in favor of this proposal. Essentially located space should really be used for business or extension of the park, not underlying against the populated housing development. As was stated in our previous email, we would be in favor of a light commercial area in which shops that would be conducive to the Kichai Arts and Business District plan could be built or even expanded in the park. I believe the city of Kichai should hold steadfast to the proposal of the Arts and Business District plan. We understand that this will require a monetary investment on the part of Kichai residents and that we are willing to accept a citywide tax increase to pursue this project. I understand why not all residents would be in favor of such a tax increase. I think at the very least, it would be prudent of city officials to listen to, to its residents and make an earnest effort to try to follow through with the twenty forty comprehensive plan. Another email from Andre Biggerstaff. I understand the housing development is being discussed for the space next to Jump Start. My opinion, there are plenty of other places in Kichai available for housing, but not many places in our main business area for more businesses. Personally, I'd love to see an Aldi there. Anyway, just something to consider. Get good business and not more housing. I don't know how Kichai can truly grow without more destinations, businesses, to attract others. The commission, any questions coming on this report?
Any question on that? On this one, where is the, uh?
It is in the middle between the two, uh...
Businesses?
Yes.
Okay.
And the space here is kind of rectangular.
What are the dimensions on that? Can I ask a question?
It is a very basic, uh, site plan, I don't know exactly. It's all on, uh, this is reserve A here, everything else is in, on the other side of the property, which is...
Yeah, I've just been holding any time of questions until, before the public start of the period. Can, uh, anybody else, any question, permission?
Yeah, is there, you know, I know in one of the last times we talked about this, uh, the community talked about sidewalks in front of any potential development, is, is that noted here? So I don't, I see parking in front, but I don't...
That is something that is not depicted on the sidewalk.
There is a sidewalk along the road there. No, no, but in front of... Along Oliver.
Currently there is.
In front of, how, in front of the, the park material over there? Those, there's no parking. Yeah. Okay. But, but down through the road, if you go walk through there, you gotta, I don't see any sidewalks in front of each one. Oh, no, but if you look at any of the residential development, put on the, sidewalk. Well, there isn't like, uh... Northside?
Northwoods.
Northwoods or whatever it is.
Yeah.
But I mean...
It doesn't mean that sidewalks can't be put in here, it's just, it's a very light site plan, even as a general like way.
Anybody else for a second? Thank you, Dustin. I will now ask, ask the applicant to step to the podium. State your name and I take the record.
Your name, Jeff Anger, fifty-one forty, East Fifth Third Street North. Um, Dustin covered pretty well on kind of our plans, I've already gone into some more detail and then some other options that we can, that we're looking at considering also. And as mentioned, the current site plan looking at, um, has fourteen thousand square feet of commercial space and two buildings up front and patio homes and the art park development. And this is similar to what Dustin presented, there's actually a couple of less patio homes on here. We're doing a little loft layout work in this region, I get kind of where, uh, shows the art park a little better also. Questions to sidewalks before, um, there would definitely be sidewalks in front of the commercial space there and put sidewalks throughout the development, that's something we definitely do. I mean, it's just one of those, maybe discuss one way or the other, but I have no problem putting sidewalks throughout the development.
Why don't we just think of, could people come off through the park and walk over there?
Absolutely.
It's making it a little nicer, a little easier to...
We, uh... Throughout this development, I want to keep flexibility and make sure it does all flow well and work well together. I mean, there's, I think there's a lot of different things that can be done, not only, but way we have laid out, other thoughts and ideas we have too to help kind of bolt together what we've been working on with community ones, with the city ones, and, um, and that's one of these, basically one cohesive development is one without a huge thing for most of them like this.
So like the park, will that be donated back to the city or how about...
On that art park, um, that, um, that's up, that's up in the air, it'd be one or the other. Um, it could either be privately held and maintained and kind of just generally open for public use, kind of the, when I compared to, um, that's smaller scale, Bradley Fair, it had park areas, fountain areas right there where people go hang out and shoot their pictures, but it's privately owned. If the city prefers to own it, we're finally donating that also. On, uh, that's, it more in the, it's kind of the city for it. Firstly, I actually prefer to hold it and have us maintain it, just once again, as part of a piece of development that I'm open to. Um, on the patio homes, just, um, a little further detail idea of patio homes, you know, they're typically smaller lots, smaller footprint, um, slab on grades, um, single family homes that are low maintenance living, basically meaning you have an HOA that handles your, uh, your lawn care, your snow removal, exterior maintenance, trash, stuff like that. They're really, um, uh, pushed towards, um, a senior generation and elders that need less space, travel more, whatever it may be, don't, um, have water capability to maintain anymore. Um, something that, not currently here in Kichai, we're seeing more and more around town, I think it continues to improve and I think could benefit a lot of the population currently in Kichai and attract other residents. Um, we've been working on, um, using two different layouts when, uh, floor planes for these, um, patio homes. A two bedroom, two bath, just a little under fourteen hundred square feet, a three bedroom, two bath, a little over seventeen hundred square feet. And these could vary, they could, uh, have, uh, we have a handful of different layouts. Uh, just a couple of things we're going to point out here on these layouts, you know, these are not going to be this kind of, um, quick thrown up, cheap build type of structure. Uh, we made sure to think about what amenities to include in these, such as, uh, built-in sunrooms, um, that are screened off, but built in as part of the property. Um, uh, two and a half car garages, which have the extended, um, storage areas. Uh, since these don't have basements, I have built-in safe rooms, um, in the property. Um, I think they typically be in the, yeah, kind of utilitarian area there, those would be safe rooms, um, for inclement weather. And here's some examples of other, um, patio home developments around town. These are three of the ones that were kind of my favorite, I felt, kind of fit with what we're looking to do. First one here is River Trail Village, it's over, um, in Riverside here, Sin's Golf Course. These are under construction now, uh, they have multiple floor plans, one of the, two bedroom, two bath, seventeen hundred square feet. These help with three hundred twenty-five thousand, we're looking to be below that mark. Um, that does look a little more of a higher end. The second one here is one that's over at Central Park in Bel Air, these are a little bit older, about ten years old. Uh, once again, two bed and two bath for three hundred ten thousand. And then another one that this out of developments, under construction, um, down in Park City here, sixty-nine and Hydralink, uh, with three bedroom, two bath at two hundred fifty-three thousand. Um, Range Row is definitely my favorite one here, but I'm kind of looking, what we're looking at is kind of a bold between these here. Uh, you know, like, I think for looking at Kichai, I'd be wanting to be at below that three hundred thousand dollar mark on a patio home, but still provide the kind of style amenities that you see at River Trail Village. And going through and looking at what we can do, we feel that's something we could accomplish. On the commercial park there, um, as mentioned, on that current site plan, we have fourteen thousand square feet and two buildings. Our plan would be pre-piled metal buildings, um, from a landlord standpoint, I might be a fan of those building types, they get beat up part of it, but it ma- it fits well with what's currently in the Kichai Arts and Business District. Additionally, those are lower cost and able to keep the rents lower, or I think the type of tenants that are most likely to attract, which are startup or small businesses looking to grow. But we would be doing stone or wood facades, um, on the last storefronts. Uh, probably about forty, sixty foot deep, um, don't want to make it too deep, so I want to be able to cut down the size of the, um, suites as much as possible, once again, to help, um, get what the startups need on the smaller spaces and, you know, kind of what we'd be looking for on this, um, type of tenants, arts, specialty trade, restaurant, coffee shop, retail, empty shop, service businesses, office use, ice cream shop. It's kind of what we envision on the property there. Here's some examples of kind of what we're thinking of with the metal buildings, um, the facade there, you see one of theirs, Richard Woodshop, that's just kind of the, um, overall thing we think would fit well with the development. Uh, last is the art park, um, when we first started thinking about this, met with, um, Morgan and Karen Card, and just with, you know, their, their presence here in Kichai, they loved the idea, they offered to donate two statues, um, for the art park. Um, from there, I mean, we would build it up with, um, other artists and, um, with focus hopefully on local artists in Kichai or at least the surrounding areas. Um, this is like kind of a vision, if it is between those two buildings there, that we are all on each side of the buildings, um, open green space seating areas. We have a restaurant, um, in one of those commercial buildings, potentially build some outdoor seating for those restaurants there. And some of the things that, key considerations is kind of what you, um, you brought up already, is that going to be sitting on or is that going to be privately owned and classified? We're flexible on that and that's just something I have to determine throughout. Um, Dustin touched on this on the current and previous zoning here. The, before the C three zoning back in two thousand sixteen, this had the R one A zoning along with multifamily. It's my understanding that that never, um, development there with, uh, used never took place predominantly because of two thousand eight, what happened to the housing market. And then two thousand sixteen, it was rezoned to C three specifically for the event center that was planned there. It was never intended, um, um, by the applicant about that, or in my understanding as anyone that that would, it was being zoned C three to make it into a multi-tenant, multi-use commercial site, that was never, uh, the, the thought of my understanding at least. It's just, it has that zoning because that event center was never materialized. So kind of what we're looking to do is pull it back some to that R one A, but really still keep that commercial there also and really do a mix of what we think could work, um, on the site there. Here is the zoning that we are requesting, um, I'll read it again as Dustin already did. This kind of illustrates what we're, um, what we're looking to do with the zoning there. The one thing, main thing I do want to point out about, want to learn more depth here too, is this reads, you know, not less than three hundred and seventy-five... The one thing, main thing I do want to point out about, want to learn more depth there too, is this reads, you know, not less than three hundred seventy-five by one hundred fifty feet, uh, for the commercial zoning. The not less meaning that we are open and will work to actually put more commercial zoning there if there is the demand, that's why we had that, but not less saying, um, that we may actually want to do more personal there if there's the demand to do so. Um, kind of like some of the opposition we've had on this, um, the site that should be used for the Arts and Business District. Once again, I don't disagree, but it, uh, it is just not feasible to develop the entire site for arts, for, as commercial for the Arts and Business District. It would take about forty thousand, fifty thousand square foot of retailers to build up that entire site, um, for commercial. The, this would, um, even though this isn't fully commercial, it would still bring the first new arts, uh, new buildings of the Arts District, uh, Arts in District, um, for the, over the last twelve years. And once again, if there is more demand for commercial, we will eliminate some of the patio home use and expand the commercial use. Um, and once again, to help promote the arts and business is the art park there, kind of one kind of feature that could really, um, be a key feature for, um, Keichai. And also it's been brought up that, uh, see, that's the site should be used as a city park. Once again, don't try to disagree with that, city Keichai has never done that, and the idea has been brought up with having a park and more of a rear portion of it and commercial up front. We are open to that also, if that's what the city wants to do, you need a developer to develop the front commercial portion. And as I said, we've been looking at numerous different options here of what we could do with the site. And that's why I like that flexibility of not less than certain amount of commercial zoning, because we have, well, we have probably twenty different site plans now, uh, the way we look at what we could do here. This one here shows, um, um, more commercial, it says, um, twelve, uh, twenty-two thousand five hundred square feet commercials instead of fourteen thousand. Um, and, and sixteen patio homes, so twenty-two patio homes, I believe is what we had, um, on the last one, and along with the art park in the middle. Now, if it is decided that the city wants to do a park there, we've worked on site plans too on how that could look. Here shows, um, a little under three acre park, um, in the rear portion of the site, and it actually connects to the existing park. Along with three commercial buildings totaling twenty thousand square feet along the front inch and limiting the patio homes down substantially down just to eight patio homes. This is, uh, pretty much the same thing, but wanted to show something a little different here is, um, instead of, uh, three commercial buildings, um, we have two commercial buildings and then three commercial lots up front there. If there are businesses that want to buy a lot and have their own building, or they want free standing building, we would build a suit of needs to them, that's something we're open to do also. Um, we're pretty flexible on how we do it as long as it all makes sense for the overall development. And this one here shows if the city decided they wanted to, the entire section of the park except our commercial up front, once again, we are open to that. Um, now, in these scenarios with the Lord City Park, we can't donate that entire land to City Park, I mean, we'd be paying a large sum for that little piece of land up front. But we're, we're, we're seeing how we can make it work out for everyone, if that's what the city wants to do. One thing I thought we were bringing up is, um, tax dollars, I want this to create tax dollar wise for the city. And once this is fully developed out, um, and then, um, they create up to hundred few thousand plus of new real estate taxes. Forty thousand, that which goes directly to Keichai based on the middle letting breakdown, um, and what I have here on the left, it shows that twenty-two patio homes, fourteen thousand square feet and the art park. Kind of how that works out to just, um, over thirty-eight thousand dollars of taxes to Keichai. On the, that, that's kind of, that, that would kind of probably be the high end of it, the low end of it is if, um, the fourteen thousand square feet of commercial space and the city took the rest of the park, that'd be ten thousand dollars. So I want to kind of show a high and a low, and it just varies depending on exactly what was built there, how these tax dollars would end up back to Keichai. But in my opinion, it's going to involve twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars of value direct to Keichai. Now, um, if we were, um, grant the zoning that is requested, um, what we would agree to do is we would agree to delay developing on the property for a reasonable amount of time. I don't have an amount of time like that would be, but go through and work with the city and figure this more out. And to me, that, that, um, kind of gets two things in play, one is discussing if there wants to be a park there or not, not like one of the, is it quite as feasible for the city to put a park there? But two, we really don't know, no one really knows the demand for the commercial space up there until it is properly marketed out there. And find out, um, who's out there, what's available, what tenants would be interested. So the first thing we would do before any work would be have arts and rooms created for the commercial portion and start aggressively marketing that. If, you know, we end up with all kinds of demand for space up there, that's when we start scaling that commercial portion and reducing down the patio home portion. The problem is, is we can't start doing that and not have a backup plan at least of patio homes or we're left with, wait, I can't be developed. You know, it's not that, any questions?
Yeah, I got one, you have, my, uh, only question is, um, for that front portion that you're reading in C three, do you have any objections, uh, to changing that to C one?
I think my objection would be, and you, anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, C one does not allow multi tenant strip center.
That's correct.
And, uh, and so, I mean, if I have a eight dollars square foot building in there with four tenants, is that a multi tenant, because I read through that, other than that, that was my big problem. C two did seem to be a problem, but C one, I, I just don't think it allows a multi tenant center.
Well, Dustin, do you know, I, I mean, there's, if you do a, uh. Oh, Chris is good. Uh, the, uh, no, you don't want to know, the, uh, you can do a overlay district or something, I mean, those are tricky, but they, they are an option. They're, they have to be finessed to, to work in the right way. Yeah, because I had asked already the city to consider initiating a zone change to C one, because C three is not appropriate if they're not looking at that.
And I, and I agree, and C two could fix it to me, I read through there and from C two to C three, from what we would be looking to do, I didn't see much of any loss.
Well, I mean, I have, I have three buildings on mine, one of them was two units, so I, I, I don't understand that.
And that, that, I just, it's, I, I mean, on the chart there, it lists, um, multi tenant strip center, I think is what's, I would call as, as a not allowed use to C one. But that's surprising really, I mean.
Richard, I believe yours took place before the current regulations, that's how you're getting away with it?
Well, I thought, I brought that, I, I brought that up before when it came to regulations, and I think they said, would you have to, uh.
I think they showed, well, actually, I don't think it's listed as a conditional use, and they're, I think it's just a not allowed group use, if I remember right.
Probably.
Because I looked at that specifically, and that was the, that was the one thing that C one that really jumped out at me.
I mean, because you, you develop a, uh, and I think, uh, that's what mine, is that a few, there's a building, you have multiple tenants.
And it's on C one, and that's on C one, correct?
That's planned, but that's, it's a possibility to city that.
Honestly, I think it's kind of air at C one having that as not listed in the law to use.
Well, but anyway, you have the objections to changing that, C two or C one?
Uh, correct, yes, that, that is correct, um, as long as we can still do a multi tenant.
Okay, so, so your intent is to get a zoning change approved, and then you're gonna work on, once you know, but it's not going to change until you come back.
Uh, exactly, and, and, well, first of all, we have to have a platid, I mean, that's why I make sure to put that contingency in there, so it's in writing, we can't do any patio homes until we have that platid out. In all honesty, I'm, I don't want a platid right away, I want to market for properties and see where the demand is there, because you don't want a platid property, and then you have more commercial tenants or you have a single tenant user that needs a bigger piece. I, I would rather try to find some of the tenants first.
Have any other question? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll now open the public here, uh, did you have a sign up sheet?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so when your name is called, please come to the podium, state the name and address for the record and make your comments, or if you will, kind of, uh, written, well, I didn't read it. I don't see them, you have the money? I'm going to just say that you got five minutes, and please don't, um, repeat things, if you can just say that you agree with a certain source. So people, but keep sure that it looks like we have as many people as we had last time, so, uh, when your name's called, come to the podium and name and address and state your position.
Joni Harris.
Joni Harris, one on Main West Triple Eight Street, um, I'm going to be, um, rebutting the city's position, um, for the rezon. And I'm going to defend the twenty forty comprehensive plan and the Arts and Business District plan. I've given you the vision for both the comp plan and the Arts and Business District master plan, I've highlighted a couple of things, but I'm going to be in general, I haven't brought the whole thing. So position one by the city is a work live option, that it means that, the rebuttal, this proposed development could potentially make the work live scenario incentive the AMV District. If an artisan village was being proposed and developed, however, that is not the proposal before you and would greatly limit the clientele buyers for these proposed patio homes. Secondly, owners, residents who limited traditional patio home development with zero lot lines are unlikely to be operating business from the property, nor would their neighbors be supportive or pleased about it, especially in a managed HOA setting. The work live intent of Arts and Business District is not met for this rezon application scenario. Number two, that Keichai should provide ample public gathering spaces, we rebuttal, the words are important, ample public gathering spaces. Thankful for the art park included in this rezon application, but is a small part of the overall development. This is the only vacant property remaining in the Arts and Business District that could house the plaza space, which is identified in the Arts and Business District master plan and highlighted in vision above. I created an alternative concept for Oliver property utilizing the vision and components included in Arts and Business District plan. I shared a presentation with the public via social media and included this information in an email sent to Dustin Belton regarding this theory, but it was not included in the planning commission packet that was sent out. With this alternative concept, there is an opportunity for farmers market to be hosted, artisan markets, craft fairs, Keichai fair, small weddings, outdoor concerts, theater productions and more. The concept also supports additional detail laid out in the twenty forty comprehensive plan, all of this would create the district's vibrant activity center in the core Keichai, I've included a photo on the next page. Also in the twenty forty comprehensive plan, it says that they want a strongly diverse local economy, promote arts, crafts and other small enterprises, this alternative concept would do that. It also places an importance on preserving our natural spaces in Keichai, and it lists there what they are, you can see the photo that I included. Number three, promote mixed area uses, uh, residences, neighborhood mixing with commercial developments. My rebuttal against this is that with the development of the Keichai Core Shops on the west side of Oliver and the commercial development on this older property, the existing neighborhoods surrounding this area of the AMV District. Will fulfill where residents intermix with commercial development. Four and five, we need to support more residential population, population increase, the numbers that were in the email that you heard Dustin read, those numbers all came from my research. Sixty ninth and Oliver, Northwoods, Noberg, the five point ninety-three undeveloped acre, uh, acre just north of K two fifty-four, the sunrise property. Looking at all of this, four hundred eighty-eight potential new homes could be built in Keichai, the goal for the twenty forty comprehensive plan is four hundred and seventy-seven, so we then exceed that. So, my recommendation, because the AMV District master plan was adopted in March twenty nineteen, it becomes the new zoning guideline for the district. The historic, the historic zoning on this property should not be used to determine the vast use zoning for this property. It is a vital property in realizing the fullness of the Arts and Business District vision. I state that the city of Keichai, the planning commission and the city council must set a precedent that the full vision of Arts and Business District plan is important regarding this property and for our town's future. And C two is the vast use zoning for this property, as a, as a working artisan village is not being proposed. There is much potential for this property to create the identity desired for Keichai that began in two thousand thirteen, a sense of place and ample gathering spaces. And therefore, I request that you do not recommend the approval of this rezon. And if you'd like a copy of the email that I actually sent in for this, I'm happy to share it with you, thank you.
Uh, Robert Conger. And I'm going to cover, I'm not going to cover all of that, but I'll, I'll raise the red ones. I heard, uh, Robert Conger, one fifty-one East Cody Street, um, I, uh, I too have reviewed, uh, uh, some of the documents. I've got all of them here that I've, I've looked through, in fact, I had a hand in many of these arts and, and businesses, I am not going to draw all of these tonight. Comprehensive plan, uh, strategic plan, um. Planning commission's got a critical role to play, uh, but there are some ground rules, and basically, uh, the ground rules are, uh, you've, you've got to determine the highest invest use for any property within the city limits. As it is laid out in the comprehensive and strategic plans, and it takes into consideration all of the plans, but every one of these plans that have been developed, uh, in the city since the development of the comprehensive plan in twenty fifteen. Nickly fall into folders that fall within the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan is the foundational document, uh, for the city. Uh, I've, I've, uh, made some notes here, and I will make these available to, uh, the public, any experts that you've got left over, please, uh, feel free to hand those out, I thought I had some here. The, uh, the development I'm, I'm hearing about, um, well, I tell you what, let's just, the highest and best use of the property, and, and, and let's just go back to some of our foundational documents. The twenty forty comprehensive plan, um, every plan has to get, uh, a wide range of, of public input. And, and I can attest that every one of the plans that we've done have, the exception of some of the later plans since, since my absence, uh, have, uh, reached out and, and involved. Surveys, uh, focus groups, uh, and community events to try to get some input from everybody. Uh, and the twenty forty comprehensive plan, uh, points out, uh, and, and the survey for the comprehensive plan, maintain a walk in the small town feel, this is a core value. Sixty-five point seven percent of residents said this was important, uh, an artsy mix of, of use, uh, town center, commercial, interchange, residential mix, sixty-nine percent supported that. Good mix of housing options, tight size, cost and rent, seventy-three point seven percent, the overwhelming majority in support of these, uh, and under housing. Uh, we're, we're talking about promoting the good mix of housing options, and I think Dustin covered that really well. Uh, uh, some of the, uh, uh, action plan items, uh, and some that jumped out at me were to, uh, H one, identify barriers to providing additional housing choices such as zoning issues. And recommend policies to overcome those barriers. H fifteen, promote opportunities for mixed use developments and higher density developments in appropriate locations. Uh, H sixteen's, four options to expand affordable senior occupied homes, apartments, transitional housing, infant living facilities, assisted living facilities, nursing home facilities to meet the demands of an aging population. Um, in the twenty fifteen strategic plan, housing, specific action steps, the cit- city should review and update zoning codes and subdivision regulations to allow a mix of housing types. Uh, the comprehensive plan should be used as a guide, uh, to residential development approvals and locations where they can be supported efficiently by city utilities. Uh, that's, uh, Enfil is right there in the middle of town, the city is going to expend a lot fewer resources developing that property than they would some further out such as, well, Rock Point's an example where, uh, the city's. such as Well Rock, which is an example where, uh, the city's expended a lot of resources, um, Sixty-ninth and Oliver. And it's all doable, but these are going to take time and effort, and, and, and our people are going to be involved in that. Um, uh, now, now, people can look at these plans and they go, well, this is just twenty fifteen. How relevant is that today? I would, uh, go back to the point that was made about senior housing, uh, as a, as a transitional aging in place. Uh, there was a twenty-twenty-two community survey mailed out to all Keichai households. Uh, there was a twenty percent response, eighty percent of those respondents favored zoning initiatives to allow age residents to age in place, and sixty-five percent favored growth in the Arts and Business District. Uh, all of, everything that I've, I've shared with you tonight, uh, I have footnoted and cited, uh, through documentation of city plans, as well as, there was another source, uh, that I, I cited for the, uh, Planning Commission's roles and responsibilities. I'll not rehash those, you're familiar with the roles and responsibilities, it's an educational piece for those who might not understand the tough job that everybody has to do here. Uh, but again, the job here at hand, the big question is, uh, what is the best outcome for the city? What meets the vision and goals that have been laid out in these foundational documents? The Arts and Business District Plan definitely falls into that. Uh, but, uh, that, and they, I think that they're all compatible in their own way. Uh, but I, I think we go back to what the basics are, and, uh, that's, that's how I've got to say it. You for it? I, I, I'm speaking as you were. I, I, I think that there's, there's ample enough information here that, that says, uh, for mixed use of business, uh, for mixed use of, of housing, uh, this, this is an excellent opportunity for the city. And to develop that property for a single commercial use is impractical, impractical. In fact, it scares me a bit that we haven't seen three zones, because should the current owner decide to sell to someone else who had some other unintended use for it that the city wasn't for, it would be very, very hard for the city to, uh, turn that down. So, um, I, I think this is a welcome thing for Keichai.
Rebecca Hatch?
Hi, Rebecca Hatch, I live on Prairie Creek, and, um, we just, I was just here a few months ago, and I did, uh, put in a letter, so you did see my thoughts. I do think, I'm, I'm glad we're talking about the survey and different things like that. It is a little confusing, because in another place on the twenty-fourty survey, it said that only two point seven percent of people wanted more housing variety in the community. And instead, people wanted local business activity and recreation. It's, uh, sixty-two percent of people wanted more business and recreation, and sixteen percent. So I think it, with statistics, it's always a little bit funny. But my, my key thing here is, I still stand on, once the land is taken for housing, we can never get it back, or parks for any other use could be beneficial for the community as a whole. And if for businesses that are already in town, and I think we've seen that it's very hard, we're talking about walkability, it's very hard for businesses like those that are out on Sixty-first, closer to Woodlon, to maintain the tenants, because there is no walkability. That's a destination business. If we have things in town and there's walkability, and also I think it makes sense for businesses and other things in the community to expand the park that is there currently, um, because I feel like the park is, I'm at the park probably four or five days a week with my kids. And every time I'm at the park, I meet new people who are, I say, where are you from? I'm from out of town, Valier, north of town, Park City, Wichita. People come from Oliver to use our park. And so that's what's gonna draw people in town, is having a park, um, in businesses. And so, if, I think the thing that's missing here is a resident. I mean, it's all of a sudden, you know, there's this, we, I had no idea that this land was even, I mean, for a long time we thought it was gonna be a, you know, somebody had wanted it for a community space. I think if citizens knew, and we had the opportunity to work with the City Council and make some decisions about like, hey, what could we do, where, do we need to get a group of people together, figure out how we could pay for a park, how we could pay for, maybe getting some commercial, you know, maybe working together somehow. Um, but it just kind of seems like changing the zoning without doing some due diligence here, um, that doesn't make sense. So I am opposed to, one, any housing foot on the property at all, just because I think there's plenty of area of ground for housing all over town. Um, and I don't think that putting in patio homes that are close to three hundred thousand does a lot to increase the diversity of housing. I mean, that's, that's a versatile population that can afford that, and the two bedroom property, so, just my thoughts.
Debbie, is it Hart?
Hart, yeah.
Okay.
Debbie, why, why are you on this, from Keichai? I, I, I really am struggling, why?